Okay, it's five o'clock. We're gonna start the Health and Human Services Committee meeting again. We reserve this time for presentation by Commissioner Social Services and Dan Kent from Galvin Foundation regarding a proposal for the motel in the town of Greenport. I ask that everybody, the presenters, a chance to make their presentation. There'll be plenty of opportunity to ask questions after they are done. Everybody can ask their questions then. However, just give them an opportunity to finish their presentation. I think that would be best. We'll just go around the room and everybody around the table introduce themselves to the folks here tonight.
I'm Officer Town Supervisor of Town Attorney.
I'm Officer Second Ward Hudson.
Rick Skler, Fifth Ward Supervisor.
Matt Morrell, Town Stockport, and Chairman of Board.
Pat Grattan, Town of Kinderholt, Chairman of Health and Medical Services.
Kelly Bucarol, Clerk of the Board of Supervisors.
Robert Gibson, Commissioner.
Maria Law, Chief of Lotterie, Town Attorney.
Sarah Sternwood, Supervisor, First Ward Hudson.
And I'm gonna turn the meeting over to the Commissioner in the intent to make their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Indeed, we're going to make the presentation, but I'll preface that by saying that this is not the first time I have presented to this committee or to members of the public. I've had members of the public into my office to talk about it. So while it may look like a joint entry tonight, indeed, in some ways, as Galvin has confirmed, it is. I'm here to present the position of the Department of Social Services. And I'll start by, you know, maybe giving a little bit of background information on how this all works and plays out. One of the many social services that you're entitled to as a resident of the county is to be put up as homeless should you be determined to be eligible. It is then my job to find you a place to stay for that night. And when I say my job, it's my responsibility. I would tell you, my staff works extremely hard to get that done and make you a very, very good job. As you'll see during the course of my brief presentation, that's a lot harder than you might think. There's very limited space to put individuals as there is no homeless shelter in Columbia County. Indeed, we're not the only county that's going through that. There's a lot of rural counties that do not have homeless shelters. The Office of Temporary Disability Assistance oversees the sheltering of homeless individuals throughout the state, and I turn to them for assistance, and I do so on a daily basis. They would prefer that we had a shelter here in Columbia County, which is not uncommon, but it's just, it's very, very difficult for rural counties to do that. Barring that, you are to find rooms, hotels, motels, or some form of nightly rental of places to put people up. And that challenge can vary as to the time of year, as you might imagine. It's a challenge all year. You can imagine that the challenge on December 21st is a lot different than the challenge on June 21st, for obvious reasons. You're talking about outside temperatures. You're talking about people who otherwise would qualify as homeless, who are eligible, who in June simply won't come in and seek those services, although they're entitled to. Find that they have to do it in December. You know, we've all felt the weather over the last month. You might think that my ranks have swelled, and they have. We were up in the high 90s over this past weekend. And that's when I left on Friday. We got seven on-call telephone calls, which led us to house two more individuals over the weekend. So it's very difficult because we have a roster of motels that we use to house these individuals. And they run the gamut. Some of those almost exclusively fill up with our clients. Some of them are mixed use. Some of them, depending on the type of year or the time of year, will agree to take more of our clients than less, and then as the weather changes, that goes. So essentially, what you're looking at is you put up the number of rooms that you have, and you're hoping that the number of rooms that you have is gonna serve the roster of clients that you have on any given night. Again, that's a challenge taken on by my Director of Income Maintenance and her homeless unit worker, but you know, it's something we have to huddle on and talk about on a daily basis because we have to make sure that the resources are there. How does this get financed? Well, as I was telling you before, OTD has eligibility standards that we follow. So somebody comes into the agency, a worker determines eligibility, opens a case. That individual has various services under that case, one of which might be an entitlement to shelter. They're subject to recertifications as times go on, but once it's open, it gets passed on to the homeless unit to then find that bed. Incredibly challenging right now, as I told you, with the number of beds needed and the number of folks in need. Another thing challenging us that hasn't been a problem in recent years is becoming a problem again. We have 10 families right now that are homeless. We had that number printed down to about two. They've come off the rolls for a little while. They have spiked back up. I have people in the agency looking at that. You know, I think it probably reflects a lot of the long-term housing solutions that we have in the county. We all know that we're having trouble. We all know that the housing stock isn't what it could be, that some of the conditions of the apartments that are available are very difficult to, and challenging. It's challenging to keep people in permanent housing. We're opening up our walls more and more. We're paying first and second wants rent. We're paying back rent. We're doing what we can to keep people in a permanent state of housing because obviously it takes a little pressure off having to house them in hotels and motels. But it's very difficult to do. So we have a rising need for families now on top of individuals. Now, the cases get open, OTDA allows us to make claims, and we get to put those claims into the state and they pay per case. How do they pay? Well, if you're an individual and you're entitled to be put up in shelter, and we make the claim and we show eligibility, the state will reimburse the county that 29% of what it costs to put them up. The county has to pick up the 71% that is left over. In certain cases, families with children will be what we call tariff-eligible, and those monies can come from a safety net provided through the federal government. That's optimal because it takes a little pressure off of the county. That's gonna depend on the circumstances of the case. Over the weekend, of the families that we have, in three of them are being placed on what we would call code blue. The family has become ineligible for one reason or another, and if it were June, would not be entitled to shelter. Columbia County has long had a policy that that no longer applies once cold weather hits. We call cold weather 32 degrees or cooler when the evening sets in. Indeed, we've housed people even if we haven't met that from time to time, just gauging on historic data and worrying that it will dip below that. But when that does occur, there's no reimbursement that comes back. So, you know, in a situation like this, when you have three families and three children that accompany them, you know, A, you've got the challenge of trying to house a family, which is hard enough because you don't wanna put them in motels. B, you wanna watch the population that you place them in because of, you know, for a variety of reasons, you get concerned for the welfare of your children. And B, it's taking beds off of the roll. Now, you know, it's an absolute moral imperative, and we're absolutely gonna do that, but it ups the challenge, and it upped the challenge again this weekend. So these are the options available to my staff to house individuals on any given night. And they're subject to all of the guarantees of the market, they're subject to the weather, and they're subject to the pricing that is out there. Now, pricing is at the bottom of the priority list as much as we all look to save the county money. Quality stays are at the top of the list. And you know, these hotels, as you might imagine, I'm not able to use four-star hotels to put people up. So I use motels, and I suppose that they do the best they can with the operating costs that they have, but all kinds of issues come about when you're operating a motel. And when I'm trying to house our clients there, inevitably, my staff gets inundated with all sorts of calls from the operators and from the clients. It's very high maintenance. You have to get out there. You have to start making assessments. Are the complaints that the clients have commensurate with the conditions? Or are they overstating them? Are we, you know, are we going to have to facilitate the operators because at least it's a room and it's a bed? And I don't wanna lose the room and the bed because then I take one more off the roster, and what if I get three more people tonight? This is the business that my folks are engaged in on a daily basis. What else are they engaged in? Not everybody who comes in is appropriate to go to a hotel. They may have been released from the hospital. There may be some questionable mental health diagnosis that, you know, it's the opinion of one person that, well, they can be discharged to the homeless unit at DSS. And it might be the opinion of my staff, this person's gonna be in danger if we leave them in a hotel. It's Friday afternoon at 4:00. We do have an on-call system, yes, but we're not out at these motels and hotels. The only supervision we can count on are the owners and operators. So my staff goes through that, and they end up... And frequently, we'll meet with members from, you know, the areas of mental health and the Department of Health and whatnot, and they're trying to iron out these issues. So all of these things come up, and they come up at cost to the county. You can imagine with individuals, when you're paying per night, and that's how these cases get filed. So 93 people being put up as homeless tonight, 93 different charges, okay? Some of them with different reimbursement rates, indeed, if you have children and they're qualified, and you start all over again the next day. Now, you don't have to recertify every day. That's not done every day. When you qualify, you qualify, and you're gonna run for 30, 60, and 90 days. What the pay is every day. When we get an invoice, the pay is for dates that we've put people up in hotels. I'm three years into this. I came over to DSS as counsel to the Commissioner originally. I'm the one who pulled out the files on the homeless because I started taking some of the complaints out of the motels. I started having staff come up to me and saying, listen, we're having trouble with this operator or that operator. That operator says, and I'm gonna use names that are fictitious, okay, just to make my point. My operator says, Smith can't stay here tonight. Smith is too noisy, and they don't want him here. Well, it's 3:30 on a Friday, okay? I've gotta now find another place for Smith. And I call somewhere else, and they say, we've had Smith before, and we're not taking Smith. Okay? This is what my staff is doing. It's okay. They're not looking for a medal or a award or anything like that. But I thought I'd start going out and bringing it to my home committee so that my home committee could know what they were going through. And my home committee could answer to me. Not that I was blaming anybody. Why wasn't there a homeless shelter in Hudson? Why isn't there a homeless shelter that can handle this kind of volume, that can provide oversight, that my staff won't have to worry about if somebody has a medical condition or a mental health condition, or is returning from a substance abuse rehabilitation and doesn't feel comfortable going into a motel setting, but would rather be in some sort of more excluded situation where maybe they can be looked in on? You know, three years ago, you're asking for the move on that. I might still be. I might still be, because there's still not a homeless shelter anywhere in sight in the city of Hudson. Now, I understand before my time, that might have been an option that was on the table, but it certainly isn't there now, and we need one. So what else do we need if we're not gonna have a homeless shelter? Well, I think you understand what we need. We need rooms. We need to have rooms. Homeless individuals need rooms to stay in, and my staff need rooms to put them in. I started to have meetings, indeed, there's members from around the community who've come in and graciously listened and talked, and they understand that. And my partner, my sister agencies, they understand that. No, it's all not good, but I need rooms. That got out there. I talked to a couple of people who had thought that maybe they would get in and get into the hotel business. They looked around, they thought about it. It simply wasn't feasible to them, and I understand that. I was approached a year ago, I think beginning of February, by members of the Galvin Corporation, and they said, we have pretty good insight into what you're going through. We've talked to people who have talked to you. We know what you're going through, but can you lay it out for us again? I did just what I'm doing right now. Just what I'm doing exactly right now is what I did. And I left that meeting because I've had many of them, and it's fine, and I don't expect anything. I did get a call back sometime over the summer that said, we are actually interested in opening up a hotel, and it would have 25 rooms. That would be 25 more rooms available to you. Think about that. It's 25 more rooms available to me. So I'm immediately interested, and I pull my staff up, and they're immediately interested. And we're happy because we're already running a transportation route out to the college three days a week, a couple of times a day, and we're thinking, well, geez, if a project like that does go forward, I mean, we may be able to tie transportation into this. This would be wonderful. That's all we're thinking. Why are we here? Because, of course, if there's a hotel and there are rooms, and I have a mandate from the state to put people into rooms, I could just go ahead, put people into rooms, which indeed is what I was gonna do. But then I got contacted towards the end of the summer by Galvin, and they said, well, hear us out. We have a plan. You're looking for hotel rooms. We're gonna make the hotel, and we're gonna make it exclusively available to your clientele. Okay? But we have a greater plan to build on that. What we wanna do is we wanna figure out the rates you charge. We wanna go from the low end to the high end. And we wanna figure out if there's some kind of rate that we could charge so then we could take in revenue, and then set aside 30% of that revenue, and we would offer that for services for the very people you're serving. Well, that's why we're here, because I don't have authority to just go ahead and go do that, because they're looking for me to sign some kind of exclusivity agreement that says they will get right of first refusal, that my staff will make sure off of their roster that those rooms get filled first. And the quid pro quo would be, okay, and we're going to invoice you, and then we're gonna show you how on every invoice 30% is going to be set aside, and then we're gonna work with you, the Commissioner and your staff, and you're gonna pick a service provider to be located on premises and provide services to these folks. I thought that too good to pass up. I thought that too good not to bring to my home committee, which is what I did. There was a proposed referral agreement that Galvin drew up. I told them I did not have authority to enter into that, that I had to bring that to my home committee. But here we are. I'm happy to talk about it because I see a room full of people, and I've given presentations to this room when I didn't have a room full of people on this very issue. So if nothing else happens, the story gets out there. We start to understand more as a community just how it is we fund this, just how many people are affected by this, and just how much we need solutions, whatever those solutions might be. And I don't know what they might be. This is one such proposal. I thought that the leaders of the community and indeed the members of the community are thinking about this and talking about this. It's been three times in front of my home committee I've pulled it. Each time, I pulled it again tonight so that there could be more thorough discussion about this. I'll leave you with the same thought I've left all the public officials. Would I have talked to them, whether it was here or whether it was in my office? I wish it would, but no matter what happens here tonight, this doesn't change. It doesn't change. People will be eligible, and they have a right to shelter, and I need to find that shelter, whatever that might be. And I welcome the discussion. I hope that it's a thorough discussion on what's best for my clients and for our community. And I do appreciate your time tonight. That's all I have. I'm here, I'm staying here until every question gets answered.
Thank you, Mr. Kent.
Great, thank you, Mr. Gibson. Hello, everyone. Thanks for being here. I'll start just by explaining why are we involved? What does Galvin have to do with housing? The reason we've been in these discussions with the Department of Social Services basically since we were founded in 2012 is that housing is a central part of our mission. We operate 180 units of affordable housing throughout Columbia County. That includes a range of housing from senior housing to special needs to low-income housing. And we're currently committed to developing 20 more by the end of this year. And those 20 units are all voluntarily low-income housing, so they're not benefiting from any public financing. We're doing that just as a part of our mission. So we've been following the need for emergency housing in Hudson and in Columbia County since we were founded in 2012. And at one point, we even responded to an RFP that was released by the county in, I believe it was 2013. And unfortunately, the homeless shelter that we proposed, despite a lot of money and time that we put into it, did not get built. However, we're pleased to be here, to be a part of what I think and Commissioner thinks is a decent solution to providing folks with much better accommodations and the services they need to limit their stay. So let me tell you what that's gonna look like. We've got a 25-room motel in Greenport on Route 9. It's currently under renovation. We're expecting to complete it in April of this year. And these rooms are going to be fully furnished, all new furniture, all new finishes. They're gonna be the kind of rooms that me or any of us would want to book with our families, which I understand is very different than the current rooms that folks are gonna place them. So these rooms will have microwaves, refrigerators, bathrooms, and they'll be built with green design standards, so nice air quality and energy efficiency. In addition to that, there's also going to be a community kitchen and an area where people can use computers, computer stations for folks. So if you're looking for a job, trying to find permanent housing, you'll have a place on the premises you can go to to conduct that search. In addition to that, that kitchen and those computer stations are located in a building that we will let the county and the service provider use to provide social services to folks. So that means giving people assistance, whether it's securing benefits, whether it's getting health care, finding a job, finding housing, helping folks do the things they need to do so that they're no longer needing to be in emergency housing. So the motel rooms are much nicer than the status quo. People are going to be getting services onsite, which they're currently not getting. And the best part of all is this is all at the same cost that the county is currently paying. So basically, the purpose of the referral agreement is that the county can pay for motel-based housing the way they always have been, but now they're gonna get a lot more for their money. They're going to get spaces that are dignified and that are worthy of the folks that are being placed in them, and they're going to get supportive services for these clients. So we're pleased to be involved on this issue. I've invited Tina Sharp here from the Columbia Green Housing Coalition, the chair, and also Michael Cole from the Department of Human Services to speak to their perspective on this project and why it's necessary to meet this really pressing need. So Tina, could you please share?
Stand up. I'm Tina Sharp. I'm the Executive Director of Columbia Opportunities, and I'm co-chair of the Columbia Green Housing Coalition, which serves as the local planning group for HUD-funded continuum of care programming. We have been involved in the design and delivery of permanent supportive housing through the continuum of care program, starting back actually, Rick, what would you say, 2002? Something like that? So I'm in this 20 years. As we have developed plans to provide permanent supportive housing to individuals who have experienced homelessness, we too are looking at how do you get from point A to point B? And so when we talk about a continuum, we talk about certain elements, housing elements, that must be in a community to effectively deal with homelessness. And so there are three main parts: emergency housing, transitional housing, permanent housing. And I'm gonna actually add another one: affordable housing that maybe doesn't require any support We currently operate services in Columbia and Green Counties. HUD has contracts with a few not-for-profit organizations because honestly, not-for-profit organizations have been the backbone of providing services to homeless individuals and families for these last 20 years. We are missing a crucial piece, and that's quality emergency housing for people who are experiencing homelessness for any number of reasons, which can include, for example, the fire that was on State and Third Street just a week ago. Five people displaced in 15 minutes. That's one type of emergency housing that most people can get behind, and our motels and our hotels can often accommodate that, especially because there's funding quickly attached. But there's a lot of other reasons that people become homeless, most of which are not really voluntary reasons. We've worked with individuals who have been very young, and we've worked with people who have been a lot older. A situation that I will always carry with me is a senior couple that suddenly found themselves homeless because of illness, a loss of income, had lost their home, and found themselves in motels, found themselves at the Department of Social Services, saying things like, I don't even know where to begin. We've never done anything like this. How does this work? Why am I here? We did everything right except for somebody got really sick. So when we talk about people who are homeless, and I try very hard to talk about people who are homeless rather than homeless people, we need to remember that the needs of these individuals are as different and varied as all of the people in this room. And we don't have a very effective emergency response to that. So on behalf of the Coalition, and I have talked with every person who serves on the executive board of the Coalition, and I have received a personal pledge of support from everyone, except for one person, that this is a project that really needs... everyone, except for one person, that this is a project that really needs to go forward, should be supported. It is the right time to do the right thing, and I ask that the committee take whatever steps are necessary to go forward with this project.
Thank you. Would you done? Do you finish?
Michael, did you want to share?
Yes, I would, briefly. My name is Michael Cole, I'm the Director of Community Services for Columbia County. I also serve on the Columbia Green Coalition of Care Housing Committee Tina just referenced, and I can't do anything close to the job she did in eloquently describing the need for safe, supported housing for people who are homeless. In my capacity as Director of Community Services, it's my responsibility to provide adequate services, that quality services and enough services for individuals impacted by mental illness, addictions, and intellectual disabilities. During the course of care, there are a significant number of people who Bob has care for who become homeless, who also have one of the, one or more of those disabilities. This collaboration seems to me to be a perfect solution to the problem that has existed for some time, having individuals with a disabling condition trying to get a grasp on recovery, placed in an emergency housing that's isolated, unsupervised, and less than safe, let's call it, in some cases. What I need to, to say to people in front of me that are, that are concerned about the quality of homeless services that they're, they're receiving is, you're entitled to, you are, would benefit from safe, supported, convivial emergency housing. This provides that, the features that come with this of twenty-four-seven staffing and infusion of onsite supports, and I could think of myself several Medicaid reimbursable services that could be brought to a site, a single site in a very efficient manner is ideal. We need a safe place for people moving into recovery to support their recovery, whether it's substance abuse recovery, mental illness recovery. They need to be less isolated. They need to be live in a community, and I, the potential for case conferencing and coordination, collaboration of a multitude of service agencies around a single-site convivial shelter is, is enormous and would, I think, improve the chances that individuals who come into Bob's care are able to stay out of Bob's care. And I urge the committee and the communities to support the project.
Thank you. Before we take any questions, I want to emphasize, the committee's not, this is the Health and Human Services Committee. We're not going to be voting on this tonight, so we're really here to listen to what folks have to say and hear questions answered. That's the second thing, and I understand there may be some people from Livingston here tonight. Supervisor Guzzi called me. He was not able to make the meeting tonight. He had a prior commitment, but he did share his concerns about this project with me, which I'll give to the committee some other time. I'm not going to hold anybody off, so I'm going to turn these over. I'm going to start right in this front row here and go along and take care of this area, and then go over here, so I'm going to start right with Supervisor Hughes.
Mr. Hughes, well, thank you. So I just want to give people a little bit of background, because I heard a lot of talk about the previous project and this current project. I was the lead on the previous project, which was the homeless project in the city of Hudson, Sixth Street. And there was some distinctive differences between that project and this project. That project, the one on Sixth Street, was going to be built by Galvin, and we, the county, were going to lease that building. It was going to be twenty-five units. We were going to lease it for three hundred thousand dollars, and then have mental health associations under contract to provide the services. Some of the things that came along with that, though, is it required the county to rent a room minimum, and the room minimum was going to be around ten rooms. And so the thought around that was, would we, at some point, if we were going to do this and we created this transitional housing, we, we got all these people to the point where they need to be in affordable housing, we went below that number that we needed to rent? And then here, the county will be holding this three hundred thousand dollar bill when we only have ten rooms filled. So that was one concern. The other concern that came forward was that we were building a facility in the city of Hudson that was too big, so we scaled it back from twenty-five rooms to fifteen rooms. And when we scaled it back from twenty-five rooms to fifteen rooms, then we still got hit with the same concerns, that this is too many people congregated in one street in the city of Hudson. Security concerns, although we had outlined the fact that we were going to have plenty of security there. So moving forward, as the new Commissioner came on board, I quickly, you know, when he brought his concerns to the committee, I quickly joined with him and says, "Look, we can come up with an idea to do this. I'm just not sure we have a willing developer to do it anymore." Obviously, what Galvin had put in a lot of time and patience and a lot of, and money in the other project, the taste actually had ran out of their mouth for wanting to get back into this game, given that they had put so much effort and time and money into the previous project. You know, and talking to them, knowing their mission statement, they decided to move forward with this project. The difference now with this particular project is, the county is not going to own the building. This is going to be a motel, ran just like the other motels in the city of Hudson, but and throughout the county even. And one of the things that the Commissioner was, was promoting was that we changed the mantra from talking about shelters going to supportive services. And, and I think that is very important, and Tina touched on that, the fact that we're talking about people. And we're talking about people who may lose their house in various circumstances, and so they need support. There aren't bad people. Some of these people may need financial support, you know, money management, various things that could help them get into affordable housing. And I think the idea is that the Commissioner, and quite frankly, these two gentlemen up here should be complimented, they worked hard on this project. The Commissioner has been working hard, along with the Galvin Foundation, to look for solutions that would help create a more dignified, respectful environment when we put our homeless in there, so that they aren't forever homeless, so that they can transition out of being in homelessness into something that's more affordable and maybe even further. And that was the thinking behind this, where we tie transportation, being close to the college, having officially a community space out and back of there. This project is, is absolutely perfect for what the county wants. It would be perfect for the homeless population, where we can, we can certainly bring them in, give them some dignity, they can feel respected when they come in here, and, and actually transitional, transition out hopefully fairly rapidly. And then we can bring other people in and put them through the same process. I think this is the model that, that other counties should look at, and New York State as well. And I certainly hope that you guys support this project.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else in this front row who wants to address this? Yes, sir.
From Tom Alvarez, from John Alvarez and Sons. I guess maybe I just know too much about the Sunset Motel. I've seen it become a mom-and-pop operation from back in the sixties, seventies, where it was particularly maintained, taken care of. Any one of us would have not had a problem standing there. Even at a cool center, very nice little mom-and-pop operation. Fast forward, and it was sold to individuals that, from what I understand, had multiple properties similar to the Sunset Motel scattered in different parts of the county and as well as other areas. It was never designed to be a full-time residence, but that's what it appeared to be. And I can appreciate Mr. Gibson's situation. I mean, you've got people standing in my office looking for a place to live, and I got no place to put them. I can understand that, you know, you're really facing serious challenges. I mean, hearing all of the information that I'm hearing now, it sounds like, you know, it's a great project. I understand what the Galvin Foundation is trying to do, but I think it's a Band-Aid on a problem that really is not going to solve the big picture. You know, you're putting a Band-Aid on a problem that needs major surgery here. And you could make it into the Ritz-Carlton down there, but I'm just concerned that the individuals that are going to be there are going to be challenged. And I can only tell you that prior to becoming, you know, part of the Department of Social Services sanctuary, I had no problems with our town. We've been at our location for fifty-seven years. Never had a break-in, never had any property damage, didn't have anything. Unfortunately, people that were prior residences, and some of them were residents of the Sunset Motel, broke into my office on Christmas Day about eight or nine years ago, and were trying to make off with every possible electronic device that I had in my office. That was, you know, two or three different individuals. And I don't want to put, what I'm, what I'm pointing out, I don't want to put them in a big circle. There's good people in these homes to be able to house them when they're in a particular type of situations. But I'm only telling you from experiences, when you have a, a situation that attracts the type of people that you're trying to be able to help, okay, not all of them are all the boys and all the girls, okay? And I, and I can only tell you that I had about four different situations when the Sunset Motel's active that affected what we do. Number one was the break-in. Number two, a year after that, probably a year and a half after that, another individual from the Sunset Motel got locked out of his room, and somehow he took his fury unlightened. I guess he was walking back to Hudson, and I had property damage, all right? From the type of individuals that we're all trying to help. Fast forward again, we have a hundred and fifty adult manufactured housing community about a quarter of a mile up on the right-hand side. I've already had people from my community, and these are folks that are fifty-five and over. They're extremely concerned about this, because they know what they were put through prior to the, you know, annihilation of the Sunset Motel. For about three years, we have had no problems. But there's a road property that we own, that's the old Route Nine that goes to the Bell's Prombelly. They would, they're walking, you know, on the road, mailboxes are there, they're approaching the tenants, pandering, you know, asking them for money. I mean, you know, all of the situations that I'm sure that every one of us here had that opportunity to, to have. Stay over on Route Eighty-two to walk to the deli. No, they got to go right through my property to be able to get to the deli. They don't want to take a little bit longer time to go on Route Eighty-two. Coming in, using the phone, you know, I mean, I can't tell you many times, people from the Sunset Motel coming in, "Can I use your phone?" You know, I got a office full of people, we're trying to maintain it. You know, do my thing on a daily basis, and I've got that situation. When that place closed down, I thanked God, because now I haven't had one problem since I have. Now not one of us here in this room would be able to appreciate having a place a thousand feet away or less from their residents to be able to attract the type of individuals that definitely need shelter. There's no question. And I, you know, I'm thinking, while you're giving your presentation about all the challenges, you know, what do you do with the over room? I mean, you've got ninety-three rooms taken up, and you've got five people standing in your lobby. What do you, what do you do with those folks?
Other counties.
Other counties.
And, and those options are starting to go away.
I imagine they are. You know, we're all trying to be able to help these folks, believe me. You know, I've done it myself, and I've gotten, you know, disappointed many times, trying to be able to help the folks that probably should be in the Sunset Motel. Didn't work out. Another thing, you've got, you know, in the southern part of Greenport, you know, not only our adult manufactured housing community, but across the street is going to be, hopefully someday, a state-of-the-art baseball park. And in part, you know, the baseball park is a school. They have a, like a one-room schoolhouse right across the street from the Sunset Motel that, you know, you've got Level One, Two, and Three sex offenders, you've got felons, you've got people that just got, I'm just not categorizing everybody who's homeless in that category, but I just want you to be aware that this is what's going to be there. It's going to be there. You can't screen them, not to my knowledge anyway. If somebody who just got released out of prison comes to Bob and he says, "I need a place to live. Sunset Motel is available," he's going to put him there. Yes, I don't think he can deny that. So just from the past, previous experiences of what I've been through, when it was the Sunset Motel, I can't approve, or I do not want, that particular type of housing situated so close to not only my adult manufactured housing community, but we know my, my sales facilities on, on the United. And in fifty-seven years, the only time that I had problems was when it became a Sunset Motel Department of Social Services. So I'd certainly like to know why Galvin Foundation hasn't concentrated more in the city of Hudson, because that's where the employment opportunities are. Somebody said that there's employment opportunities down in the southern part of Greenport? Well, would you let me know where they are? Because I certainly would like to be able to find out. You know, you have to transport them from, from Greenport into Hudson. That's an expense. I mean, there's a lot of, you know, a lot of reasons. I'm thinking they have, you know, places in Hudson where they can probably renovate some of those places, like Mr. Hughes has stated, to be able to accommodate, you know, twenty-five, thirty people? You know, the reason why it didn't go through, I'm not quite sure. The native residences that were close by really kind of thought twice about that. Maybe they were overwhelmed with that type of opportunity to do. So I just, I, I just cannot, you know, approve this type of facility being located to so close to my adult manufactured housing community, sales facilities, and all of the other people that I've, you know, I've had this type of situation, problems in the past. And I, believe me, I'm not against homeless. I, I put myself in a position where I tried to help the people that are in a, you know, less fortunate situation. And unfortunately, I've had very, not a lot of success with it. I guess it's just in their DNA. I don't know. I've given them so many opportunities to be able to prove to me and to themselves that they can turn around and be able to provide themselves a home of their own that they can maintain and provide, and that, and it just hasn't worked.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to, is there any other comments in the front row? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jennifer Strodel, and I'm the Director of the Libery School, which is located less than a thousand feet away from the close location of the motel. I'm a neighbor of Mr. Alvarez's. And we opened up our school in two thousand and fifteen, so as Mr. Alvarez referred to that, that was a time when the Sunset Motel was no longer in operation. So the location for our school has been really wonderful for the children that we serve and the families that we serve. We currently have twenty-two students enrolled, all of Columbia County residents. The children are aged five to twelve years old. The concept of this school, it's a contemporary one-room schoolhouse. We're very passionate about what we do. We are really interested in, like, really creating a safe haven and a trusting, loving educational environment for children, which can be difficult to find right now in other schools. And at the heart of what we do is really this multi-age program. We are, we use the property all year round. This is our third-year operation. We are in talks with the landlord. It will be our permanent location. We are in talks with the landlord to make this a long-term location for the Libery School, which I think has been really welcomed by the community of Hudson. There's, in addition, you know, there is in other schools. And like Mr. Alvarez was saying, the, the project, the, there's, this is the first time, you know, I've been at one of these meetings, and the project, there's obviously a really serious need for what you're asking. What I'm opposed to is the, the choice of location. It just doesn't seem like it would be an appropriate environment to have that facility so close. I mean, we're really, I think we're less than a thousand feet really from, from the facility to elementary school that's fully operated. I mean, the, the main thing for me as Director is the safety, is a safety concern for the children, also to the exposure. In that location, the only, you know, really, Mr. Alvarez's business and the Libery School are really the only immediately walk, like, within walking distance amenities or facilities. You know, there aren't, I understand that there's been a lot of talk of transportation services being provided, but I don't really understand how that is actually going to work in a feasible way for basic needs like food and drink, or just to go outside and, you know. I don't know, I just don't really understand the location from the perspective of your clients. And yeah, and so I do have a lot of concerns. And, yeah, and so I do have a lot of concerns in terms of, of the, the people that I represent within the school community and their children. And I don't know if that, if the presence of the school was even considered in the Galvin proposal or the choice of location. And, you know, fortunately, we did not, we weren't open at the same time as when the Sunset Motel was, but we've had three good years and, from what Mr. Alvarez, Alvarez was saying, it sounds like there could be some problems that I don't think we want to.
Listen, Chairman, before you take another question, because I don't want this to linger out there, can we, as the Chairman...
Okay, could we just do this front row and then I'm gonna ask him to respond to this because we've got a lot of people here tonight and I'd like to give them all a note. Did anybody else in the front row? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Nicole Cherevi. I'm a Hudson resident and a parent at the Libery School. And I learned about this this morning and did as much reading as I could do all day. And I thank you all for all the work that you're doing. It's incredible work and it's so needed in our community. But I too have a question about the location being so close to the school. And I wonder if that was a consideration? And also, my other question is, it is an emergency facility. What is the vetting process of every student, every person that comes in to stay? And as was discussed earlier, it seemed like there was some confusion, and for my part, being new to this, whether or not it's transitional versus an emergency, how long do people stay, all those sorts of questions. I think people coming in and out constantly, I, I question that for the safety of the school. Jenny's created an amazing community and the kids have so much freedom and they're learning so much. And so, I just think that safety is the biggest concern, especially in light of what goes on in schools nowadays. It's a complete relief as a parent when you know your child's safe.
Does anybody else in this front row have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Nicole Bedore. And I too deeply respect what all of you are doing and I, and I feel deeply that we do need what you're talking about. But I do, and I was a single mother at one point in my life and I didn't have a car. And I remember it was the most demoralizing time in my entire life. And if I was somebody who was trying to get on my feet and I had a child and I wanted to get a job and I wanted to be part of a community, it would be very hard for me to be bussed into a community and have to wait for someone to pick me up and to try to organize my life, especially kind of in a community like Hudson where there isn't any inexpensive cafe to go sit in, all you have really is the library, right? And, and I'm confused because Galvin, I gather, and I don't know the exact figure, something like sixty properties in Hudson. And I don't know the full story about Billy's story, but I don't understand really why, if you have sixty properties in Hudson, why you pick a motel in Greenport to have a shelter for people and why can't we, as a city and with Galvin, create a space where people really can be there and talk to people and leave and go look for a job and see if they can get part-time work or whatever. And, and full disclosure, I'm also Jenny's mother. But I too feel, and especially in the world that we live in now, that's a very difficult situation because right across the street, you also have, when it gets warm, you have an ice cream stand, you have a beautiful playground, and it's kind of unfair. It's kind of like, "Mom, can I go on that slide over there?" No, you have to stay here. It's just kind of a strange setup, I think.
Supervisor Thurston, did you want to say anything or...
No, I'm just very glad that you're coming to the community and I think that it's something that always needs to be done in these situations. And usually, it's done later in the process than it should be happening. So, I, I think it would be very hard to find a situation within the city of Hudson that could do what you're suggesting. But I'll, I'll let it go at that.
Thank you so much. Good to see you again. Good to see you again. Okay, I'm gonna hit this gentleman here. Did you have a comment?
Just a quick comment. I'm Dave Arfali in Chad. I support the project. I think that some points are valid, but there aren't perfect solutions. And we have immediate need, it sounds like there's a lot of upside potential to this for almost no, no downside. And the costs are very similar. It sounds like we're putting people in hotels already that are gonna be next to somebody who's not appreciating it. These are gonna be well-managed hotel rooms, I'm assuming, and I support pressure.
Thank you. Commissioner, Dan, did you want to address any of these comments?
I did because, and for everyone who made a comment, you know, let me start. I, I fully understand every concern that you just raised, not only because I deal with it an awful lot, and I don't think it's, it's something I should be unmindful to, not, not in the least. I mean, a school, I'm very mindful of that. I'm mindful of all the schools in the area. And therein lies my problem, you know? I wanna take all those factors into consideration and say, "Well, yeah, let's not do that." I mean, right? You hear stories like that, that's the first thing you think of is, is there another solution? Then I think of the other hotels that I use and I, I'm already hearing a lot from them and rightfully so, and people who live in those neighborhoods and rightfully so. And so, therein lies my dilemma. I do think that there should be a shelter and it should probably be centrally located near where all the services are. And it should be accepted by the community. And these, indeed, these people are part of the community. You understand the reality in which I'm operating. This opportunity came up to me and, and it was out in Greenport. It's not ideal because I've got to arrange for transportation. I do have to do that. It is in a location where people have had a business for decades and decades. You know, I understand how that must feel. You know, so I'm, I'm caught in between my fellow citizens and their concerns, and I share them, and my clientele, which, you know, when I bring this to the committee, I, I really need to, to balance, what, what can I provide to them? You know? And I wish that the community could get together, quite frankly, and say, "Well, how about this for a solution?" And everybody has skin in the game and everybody gets involved with it. You, you know it can be funded, you know, I, you know, unfortunately, there's need. If we could run out of need, we wouldn't have to fund it, we wouldn't have to have this discussion. So, I thought of all of these things when I talked to everybody over the course of the summer, including, you know, should, and I've never met Mr. Alvarez and I apologize because I know you're out there. And one of the things I thought is perhaps I should be going out to speak with Mr. Alvarez. I learned about the school after the fact. I did not know about it. I did, this, this site planning is not done by the county or the commissioner, right? And, and I've got disparaging Galvin and all, I'm just saying, it's what was brought, okay? And it's an opportunity. It's twenty-five rooms. I thought that it became a better opportunity when they expanded on the idea because the first opportunity does lend itself to the very thing you're talking about. Well, they're gonna own and operate a hotel and I'm going to put clients out there, just like I put clients out at any hotel. Can I promise you that it will be different there than it is on the eastern border and the northern border and the sou- southern border? I can't, not under those circumstances. What made me bring this to the committee and now to the community is, is the promise of, "We're going to spend money, our own revenue, to try to stop the very thing that you're worried about. Have oversight and supervision." Okay? And, and the triage would be different at the, at the eligibility level because with twenty-five rooms with supported services, the staff would try to put people there ready, more ready to transition at that time and then prepare the, the excess folks with the same type of thing, although they wouldn't get the intensive services, with a mind for, "Well, maybe we'll start to bring the population down." The only thing I think really makes it work is, is the promise to set the money aside and provide the services and the oversight. I can't guarantee you, as I sit here now, and I won't, that, "So, see, you'll be fine." I can't guarantee you that. I admit that. I'm operating in the reality that I have. I was looking for solutions, this one came to me. Does it mean I'm closed-minded and not open to others? No. It means we finally have a room full of folks together and they wanna talk about it. They wanna talk about doing it. And maybe we wanna talk about how we could make this safer and how it could make more sense, how it could be transitioned over time and perhaps moved out of there. I don't know. Now, I'm talking out of school because it's not my project, it's not my money, it's just my need. I so appreciate, and I hope you hear everything you say. Go ahead.
I guess that's my question again, is who would be there? Is it an emergency situation? And so, would it be transitional people who are there for two to three months or are trying to get their feet back on the ground? Or is it like, would it be people transitioning, coming in and out every night or, and what is the vetting process?
Great question, great question. And, you know, I presented to other folks, but I don't know if I put that here, the average length of stays, which is somewhere between four and six and maybe four and seven and eight months on the extreme. I've got some folks that are almost two years right now, that's rare. I have some that are very transient. They may come in because it's extremely cold. They may come in because they're out of town. These are not good fits for your game, Rob, and I freely agree with that. The four-to-six-month range, why is that? Well, as Mr. Cole told you, it varies. You know, it can be a medical condition, a mental health condition, it can be, it can be a family got displaced. The other, I should say, the other thing that really made me go, hmm, to this project was set-asides for families, rooms together, joined with little common areas. I don't always get that, you know? So, yeah, it's, it's more transitional. I would envision it that way. I would envision it, I hope, in the eligibility process, I'm not a hundred percent guarantee on this, that we're tracking on people who look ripe at that very moment to, over four to six months, you know, learn the art of budgeting, get back on their feet. Or, you know, there's some protected rooms that are planned in this project and if they're coming from rehabilitation, they're back in the administration part of it so they're not out in the population, that kind of feeling of security. So, these are the pluses. You've very, very eloquently outlined, outlined for us, you know, the drawbacks and there's history to it. I would hope that these muddies would take care of that history, that's my hope. I can't guarantee you this is...
Mr. Park, pardon me, can you address the, the comment about sex offenders? Because I think that's the one that's like lingering in the room.
Well, of course it does, but I, I take this on a daily basis. And by the way, there, there are individuals who qualify and are eligible for, for housing and I have a moral and legislative imperative to house them, but we're very, we have to be very careful with how we do that. There, as you know, the legislature also makes them register, okay? And there's different levels telling us different levels of danger. This I can guarantee you, I'm not putting any level of danger in a supportive housing situation where I have children and families. I am not gonna do that. So, having said that, can I guarantee you that the entire danger element is going to be removed? No, because there's other people who have, coming out of prison and for what? Maybe an assault, maybe a white-collar crime, maybe a burglary. And it may be that they're at the point in their lives where they're in fact transitioning and they are in a better place and I can't put them through this program. A Level Three sex offender, and I'm not trying to be pejorative in any way, I know that would be a non-starter in a supportive type place where I have children within the vicinity and within fifty feet of that. So, of course, we'd have to take that into consideration in Level Twos and Level Ones. That can't happen. That's not a discrimination so much on those folks as it is protection of children and families. So, if that helps, I mean, you know, that's one element that I would have to look at. Mind you, there are other places around the county. And they were en masse in another county who was accepting that population more readily. And don't think commissioners like myself from around the state weren't taking note of that, saying, "Well, there's a place we can put them." It's a major problem. I, I don't know what...
I just, I just have two questions, which was that, I thought you mentioned that part of the, part of the proposal, the partnership, was that the motel would have first right of refusal for your clients? So, how would you be able to, to kind of meet both needs in terms of screening, so to speak, and, and just, you know, filling up the rooms accordingly? You know, and so, you know, that's my one question. And the second question is the thirty percent revenue that would go towards services. I just, I'm, I'm just curious as to what services there and how that, that, like, because that's, you know, that, that, I'm asking just because I hear you and you're saying, "Well, this is, you know, this is the, this is what makes this project different than the other motels, facilities." And I just think it's, it's, I'm just curious, I just would like to hear.
And I'd be curious if I were you too. And, you know, we're at the stage now where this needs to be passed and then we would bring what we call voluntary agencies in. Those are agencies that work with DSS and other sister agencies. You've heard of them, St. Catherine's, the Mental Health Association. And we, we would next bring them in and say, "Look, we're trying to provide wraparound services for these folks. We're trying to provide oversight." I asked in particular, and I don't have a site plan because I'm not a project engineer, I, I have nothing to do with building this, but I did say, "I would rather not have the model where people are pulling up and pulling out all hours of the night because that's a problem for me." Because other hotels, they're having parties. Other hotels, people are ending up in the rooms that shouldn't be there. I would envision and I would expect that the voluntary agencies would make sure that's not happening. I'm being told this will be built in a way where you can't just drive up to a room, that you have to drive up to the outside administrative building and then announce that you're there. So, that's, and certainly during your hours. I can say that, you know, the extent to which that lowers the risk, we would have to study that, I can't guarantee you that. That's the thought in my mind, that maybe this could work because of that. And I'm at least willing to explore that, that's all. And you're looking, you know, we've run the numbers anywhere between two-hundred thousand and two-hundred twenty-five thousand a year to hire an outside agency to come up with a plan, at least during the bulk of, of, of all operating hours, which would include your school, having people there, coming up with programs. What are you gonna, you know, what services are you gonna provide? What, what's efficacious, you know, for this population? What is it that they need? They need to know more than I do when it comes to service delivery. They need to come to me with evidence-based programs. That, that's, that's the next phase to it. That's the bare minimum that I would expect.
And I ask one question, it's my understanding, in this model where you are finding emergency shelter and motel, you make, you mentioned that the only supervision we can count on are the owners and operators of those motels.
Correct.
Is this a different model in terms of supervision that, that you're, that, that your department and your office would be supervising this model as opposed to the owner and operator?
Well, inasmuch as two things on that, owner and operator, I've got more of a commitment from this operator to be there at a full-time presence. And it would be expected out of the services that, you know, what, what are you gonna have here for staff and what is oversight gonna mean to you? And convince me of that. Well, we're gonna have administrators and we're gonna have, we're gonna have caseworkers from our agency here and they're gonna be monitoring the rooms and they're gonna be doing room checks throughout the day. And they're gonna be making sure people are going for their job searches and making their appointments, okay? And obeying, you know, if they have orders to be taking medicines or whatever. That's at a bare minimum. What's on the upside is still yet to be determined, but that's at a bare minimum. It's not a security force. I won't, I won't kid you, but if my other hotel owners and operators, I've got who's ever at that window at that time when they say they're gonna be there. And I know they're not there most of the night and I know they're not there most of the day. And I live with that. I just, I live with that. And it's, you know, it's something I have to live with because I need a room. You know, I'll, I'll tell you something else that I live with as a commissioner. Ota Da, who I mentioned earlier, is always putting pressure on me to do inspections of rooms, which I do. They're always spot watering and saying, "Well, we're gonna do inspections." And I've had them into the building and I say, "Wonderful. Safety is a great thing." Now, my next question, when you shut down a block of rooms for me, what do I do then? I still have... I still have the same number of folks, now I have 13 fewer rooms. And I see both sides of that. What do I do? You know, again, I'm going to go back to whether it's incendiary or whether it's not. Should there be something in town that accommodates for these numbers? That has the capacity to fulfill the need? Yes. What other answer can I give to that? Of course there should, but I don't have it. And I haven't had it for the three years I've been here. I just heard Ms. Sharp say in the 20 years that she's been here, she hasn't had it. Maybe this helps change the conversation, that would be great. But this is the proposal on the table for the community, for the board to consider. And that's the best I can do to tell you what my vision of it would be from the county perspective. And what I would expect as far as safety and services delivered from my perspective.
We're going to take the questions in the second row. Is there anybody in the second row? Yes, ma'am. We'll get to you.
Just a question, I mean, it seems to me this is about as good as one could, as good a proposition as I've heard. I live in Greenport, my name's Carol Peckham. And I've gotten sort of involved with the homeless situation by working at the Salvation Army, where we see a lot of people who are destitute. So I've been looking at this for a while. I have one question, which is have you ever looked at properties in northern Greenport? Not Port Joston Boulevard, but along Fairview Avenue, where there are low-income housing, I don't know how many properties there are, but if there was a facility that could be built there, then the homeless would have access to shopping. They'd have access to the buses that go into town. I mean, it just occurs to me that that area, I don't know if you've investigated it, but that particular strip would certainly be worth investigating. I'm sure you probably have looked at it.
Well, remember from, and it's a great question and point, from my perspective, I don't get to pick sites. I don't get, you know, the county isn't leasing or buying a building, you know? I mean, I at least haven't, I haven't considered coming to the board saying you should buy or lease a building. Because then that's, that's a whole nother slew of issues that come with that. Therefore, I can't really site plan and I can't pick these places. The reason this comes to me is because private enterprise has come forward with it. If private enterprise came forward with that and said, listen, we're, if you're looking to enhance your model, you're looking to get better services, you know, we're thinking of building this, you know, much, much for the same reasons, we want to be a part of this. Here's where we're going to do it and here's what it will provide. I think that makes a lot of sense. You know, when it comes to site, I'll bet you we could all go around the room and we could start to talk about, yeah, maybe we could put it here or maybe we could put it there. I don't dismiss that, I'm sure that that's true. Right now, I've only got the sites that I've got and I've only got who will work with me. And that's it. So I can't pick spots, otherwise I would.
So there's no way the county itself, I mean, I know, I understand, it costs about 1.5 million, I've heard, to do that. How is it that homeless?
That's the total development cost in addition to the cost of acquiring the motel. We essentially looked for a motel that was for sale, that was as close as possible to the city of Hudson, to limit the amount of time of transportation for people. Because we hear about folks having to travel, you know, hour and a half, two hours just to get into the city for their services. So this will be a much, it's still not in the city center, which would be more convenient, but it's a lot closer than where people are currently being placed.
Yes, sir. So my, my kids go to Liberty, I'm also zoning board in Livingston, and I'm a volunteer fire department in Churchtown, which covers Yorktown, U Hotel. And I would say we do EMS calls and fire calls and probably once a week we get a call from there. And the calls, I'm not going to go into detail, but they're, they're graphic, they're awful. There, there's domestic abuse, there's, there's blood all the time, there's ODs, it's really, really bad. And it's not something you would ever put next to a school, like it's just a bad zoning. You wouldn't put that situation anywhere near children. And it doesn't make any sense to me. I know this probably happened before you guys were thinking about a school doing that, but it's a huge liability, like something will happen at some point between that and the school, which is like to guarantee that population. I'm sure there's great people come through that population, there's also people in really hard times in their lives. It's gruesome up there often.
I'm sorry, where did you mention?
Uh, Yorktown.
Yeah, Yorkshire.
Yorkshire, Yorkshire. It's, I mean, every week you get a fire call there and it's awful. And so I, I just, I don't want that near my kids and my kids' school. And I, you know, I, we've been doing everything right to keep our kids safe. And then suddenly the government and the private enterprise is going to say, ah, sorry, you're not safe anymore. And that really hurts, that's really, and then my other point that I want to bring up is, you know, I know Columbia County is going to vet it and you're not going to put sex offenders there, but if there's empty rooms, what's stopping Duchess County, Rensselaer County, Green County from sending their sex offenders there?
Well, my understanding would be that this agreement would certainly take care of that, so that that would not happen. And I, I would insist on that. You know, I'm not going to mention names, but I'm going to validate the challenges that you just brought up. I mean, that's part and parcel of what we're talking about here. So I, you know, I fully understand that. Again, I would, I would want to find a way for that not to occur out at the sunset because you have a school right across the street, because there are relevant businesses right there who have been there for decades, who have experienced, not, it's not just speculation, but have experienced people walking through their property. The hope is that the services on the site take care of them, assuage those concerns at least to a high degree. The hope, I don't have a crystal ball, I can't guarantee anything, it is a hope. So I don't dismiss your concerns.
These are kids in Columbia County and we're putting, I mean, it seems like not a fair balance to like hope and maybe, and maybe well, nothing will happen. We have an example four miles away where terrible things are happening all the time. It just, it just doesn't make sense to me. It's really, so anyway, that's, sure, the people got other things to say.
No, I appreciate it. If you ever see it.
So noted, so noted. Mrs. Yudal, you've been very patient, yes.
We live in, that's my husband, Dan, he does the baby goes here. We live in Taconic, it's right next to Livingston, we're about maybe a half a mile away from a little motel. We knew the people who ran it, the runners, and they ran it for many years. And when we heard about this, we thought, gee, this is great, you know, it's just great. It's in the middle of all the farming areas in Livingston and Taconic. I don't know if any of you have heard of Malcolm Nance and SNVC. He is forming a program to assist local teenagers who need help in a farming program. It's not going to be on Route 9, that old farm, what is it, Stockport? Stockport. And he's starting this program very soon, working with the schools of Hudson. This property you're talking about is surrounded by these beautiful farms. And they always need help, they just always need help. And perhaps, you know, he could come in too and give them some advice. Because I think it's a wonderful idea, you know? But here we are, we have our property, you know, we're located in Taconic, we're surrounded by farms. Everything's hunky-dory. But, you know, there's Hanaford, they didn't get a job at Hanaford. There's the golf range, there's millions of flower companies and all that. It's possible that these people can get help there. And they're all within lock, walking distance. But, you know, I know there's a lot of prejudice in our area, you know? I mean, I'm very aware of it and Dan and I fight it every day of our lives. This is a good idea, it's worth a try, you know? And, and, and he just, and also the sheriff's office is there. Isn't that Dan, the sheriff?
State troopers.
State troopers. So, you know, you tell the state troopers to help out, you tell the community, you get people from each community, Taconic, Livingston, Greenport, to help out the program as volunteers. I mean, there's hope here, you can't give up on this. And, and this little motel is sweet, it's very cute. And, and, and they, you know, people who need help deserve something nice. And they, they're right in the middle, you know, the Rockefeller Farm, I don't know, a lot of all the big farms up there. And they need help, so they would put them through, we could go to them. You know, interview the farmers and see, okay. And then maybe Malcolm Nance would come with us, you know, he's a great guy, great, great guy. And what he's going to be doing on Route 9 in Stockport is brilliant. So, I mean, there's hope, you know, you just can't give up on it. Sure, the kids in the school, you, you, you know, you know, it's, you just, if you're aware, they're there and you provide security.
Are you going to cover security? You're going to do security downstairs? Awesome.
Yeah, yeah, I'll help, sure. I've been a volunteer my whole life.
Okay.
And I will help.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Hi, Keith, good to meet you. What I keep hearing are a number of very legitimate, serious concerns about the project. And I, my, my reaction to that is they need to be addressed. And that how well you address them should this project go forward likely determine how future projects are received throughout the county. The second observation I have is to expect that all these facilities should be in Hudson is to underestimate the extent of the problems throughout the entire county and the contribution that the entire county needs to make, not just the city of Hudson.
Thank you, sir. Did anybody else in the third row have any? I'll get, I'm just going to do this here and I'll be right over with you. Anybody else in the third row have anything they'd like to say? Yes, sir.
Actually, so I do have a couple of questions, just offhand. And I'm sorry, you may have said this, how many people generally need supportive housing during the summer months? Is there enough that you expect that until we cure homelessness, we're going to be running this motel at capacity from Columbia County?
Well, let, let me say this. When, when my numbers drop close to the capacity of this place, we've made gains because typically we don't. However, that is always the goal. The goal is in five years, you know, when, when this might have expired, we have a whole new landscape. But I'm realistic.
So a couple, still more questions. If people from neighboring counties are coming in and using this as a shelter, are they then accessing Columbia County services or do they have to be transported back to there? It just does not, you know?
This, this, because we've overflowed, I've put people in neighboring counties. We typically don't do, we don't have room at the end.
Okay. So could people be placed here as part of a transition out of prison? Is that something that DSS, as part of their homeless services?
Yes.
So there's going to be?
I won't say what part of that population or perhaps, perhaps no part of that population would end up there, but I can't guarantee.
I just wish to know, like that's, there's no.
But the dangerous element that I spoke of before will be screened as much as it can be screened in my department.
Mr. Kent, you were involved in the planning of this, so you're pretty familiar with the layout of it. About how many square feet are going to be dedicated to social services, this office?
It's about 1,500 square feet.
1,500 square feet, so about how many workers?
That's to be determined, so once we, we haven't selected the subcontractor yet and we'll be doing that in collaboration with the county, so.
How is Galvin going to utilize the space if this project isn't approved, just as the same way?
Oh, I mean, it's, we're developing a motel that's going to be completed in April, so we'll rent out the motel rooms to the county or, or wants them.
And a question, if Galvin has right of refusal, if there is an issue that happens with, you know, one of the kids at the neighboring school, who holds liability?
As far?
As far as if, if there is an attack on one of the children at the neighboring school, is it the county that holds liability? Is it Galvin who is responsible for this?
You know, you're going to have a couple of different points of entry on that because you're going to have owners and operators of a hotel and they have to assume some of that risk. You know, the county's already placing people all about.
So Galvin has not been indemnified as part of their?
Oh, no, not as part of our deal, no.
Is there any other questions, sir? Sir, you just, no, no. Okay, let's move over here, give this gentleman a chance here in the back, yes.
Hi. I'd like, a lot of this project, and I think rightly so, seems to hinge on these supportive services. And I've been listening to what different people are saying and I'm very confused about what the supportive services will be and who will pay for them. I understand that a percentage of the money Galvin will give back in terms of providing these services. I also heard Mr. Kent say that they were providing space for the county to provide services. I heard you say that voluntary agencies were going to provide services. I heard a gentleman on the other side of the room say there might be medical reimbursement for services. It seems to me, based on the numbers you've described, that if this deal goes through from the day the motel opens its doors, it's going to have 100% occupancy 365 days a year. And just, you know, there's always, you know, always happened for the last few years, more than 25 homeless people and Galvin will have a, will be prioritized.
They will, they will, under this agreement, they will.
So they have 100% occupancy virtually guaranteed. If it's 25, you know, I have no idea what the numbers are, I just very quickly on my phone, you know, 25 rooms at $85 a night at $365, it's $775,600. So will there be, you know, that's a big ask, it seems to me, of the county. So I just hope that the county will be very robust in also making a big ask of Galvin of exactly what they're going to do with the 30% of however many hundreds of thousands of dollars it is. And will there be a really transparent accounting for that? And will some of that happen before this is voted on? Or will we approve it and then find out later how all that's going to happen? Well, I just, I think it's very, very important that the financial arrangement is very explicit and very transparent. And at least from what I've heard tonight, it sounds vague.
Well, that might be my fault, so I'll lay it down a little more clear. Good math, that's, that's the way I do it every day. I look at capacity, I look at room price or average room price. I do the math for the entire year, figuring, you know, I'm going to have at least 25, it's probably going to be more. I don't know if you remember or if you were here before, individuals are different than families who might be ten if eligible. But regardless of whether I'm giving, under the present circumstances, that's not so much a county commitment because those 25 folks are going to be put somewhere. And I'm going to spend the money on that. Is it transparent? It is, because it runs through each individual's case. So everybody who comes in and gets an eligibility determination done, the file is open, Smith, Jones, Thompson, so on down the line, we have to track when they've stayed. I need to get an invoice that accurately reflects that. And then I make the claim to the state and I get my reimbursement back depending on. So, you know, and I start almost every meeting and end almost every meeting with this, or at least I have for a few years, that's happening already. That's not going to happen. That's happening. This is just 25 more rooms in which that will happen. And I'm told better rooms. And it's being built from scratch, I, I have to walk through it myself, but I'm being told better rooms. And I think, well, that might leave 25 other rooms that I find less than savory, empty, and I'll be putting them there, that much is true, the money I'm spending in, in, in event, do you understand that?
I understand that, but I understand that the, you know, the cell, if you will, the community to embrace this is because of these supportive services that Galvin is providing.
The 30% back on the $775.
Yeah, I can touch on that aspect. So as part of the referral agreement, we will be required to spend that 30% on supportive services. We're not going to be providing them ourselves. We're going to partner with one of the organizations in the community that's already working closely with both the Department of Social Services and with the population in question.
And just so it's clear, when you say spending, will, would any of that money go to, say, like facilities maintenance for the computers in the kitchen? Or will all of it go to salaries for support and supervision?
Oh, that's purely a supportive services subcontract. So as far as, yeah, the maintenance of the facility, that's all, that's all in our operating. That comes out of the 70% that's, you know, cleaning all the rooms, changing the lead-ins. the lead-ins, laundry service, maintenance, loan the lawn, all that stuff.
So the 30% comes out of the gross, not a net after expenses?
Yeah, gross rent from the rooms that the county.
The gross amount that the county is spending.
The guts.
Are there any other questions?
Can I follow up on that? Because I think that's a great point. And what I think that I, as I think about it now, I would like to give at least quarterly reports on those muddies being spent on supportive services. And I would commit to doing that, so that the board would have them and members of the community to take a look and see what's being spent on it. So that's A. You know, I'm going to suggest, as we close, whatever the chairman wants to close, to invite some of these folks into my office and be part of the conversation of what this is going to look like and what we might want to do. And, and at least you can say what you feel would make you feel better about this kind of, it doesn't hurt to say, and I think it doesn't hurt to listen to it. And then you're involved, and I want to address all of those concerns.
Are there any other questions over here? Yes, ma'am. You've been standing there very patiently.
Very quiet. First, I want to thank you for your transparency and kind of honesty and really kind of what I think is playing, exactly. You called yourself a middleman between your clients and the proposal that you're, you're looking at. I think one of the key points that I, has come up again and again is that everyone's heart, my heart included, when I saw this, I was like, well, I know how I feel on this topic every day. And so you do struggle with the fact that like now that it's going to be in my backyard, clearly I have a different, you know, like different emotions are being triggered. My brother was homeless, and so it's, I understand that there's very different pictures that you can paint about what homelessness is. And you do have people who are put out by fire, but there's also, it can't be ignored that we have a volunteer firefighter who also has a very true understanding and idea of what can be the picture of homelessness. And I don't think we can ignore statistics that 38% in a homeless situation, sorry, that 38% in a homeless situation are substance abuse users, 26% are alcohol abusers, 26% are other drugs. The number one reason that women wind up in a shelter is domestic violence. And so I think when you look at those stats, and wherever my heart lies with those, and with my brother, and with women who are impacted by this, I would be, it would be, I think, naive to say that when you just look at a neighbor and you say, this is the true picture of this population, good, bad, middle ground, and children who are five to 12 years old. I don't think anyone in the room can say that that is a good neighborhood match. And I don't, I mean, it's, and when you look at it as just a pure neighborly match, it's like if we came into this room and we're proposing a, I was reading online, like a motorcycle trap next to a nature preserve, one would argue that there's some, some conflict with that, that neighborhood. And so I would just ask that committee, think about that neighborhood match. And I know it's an impossible thing. We've all raised, like, where, where do we, how do we help this? But I think, given the lack of detail in terms of the security, the ability to secure, what is a very real picture from volunteer firefighter fighters, what might be, there might be, I'm sure it's very foiled, foilable? Do you say foilable? Or they can be foiled, how many incidents go out to the other 60 oper, how many calls go out to the other 60 operating properties, and kind of, how many incidents are happening in that place? And what is the true picture? And I don't know, it, it's hard to see how without any guarantees of security, and even with guarantees of security. I mean, we've all learned that the good guy with the gun, you know, is not at the right place at the right time currently. So it's hard to see how this neighborhood, and again, the lack of infrastructure, the lack of walking employment. I mean, it's a big leap to say that farmers are in a position to offer the type of employment that many of these people might need. You know, it's, Rockefeller might have a willing heart, but might not have the equipment internally to say that as an employer, we can make sure that these people are getting off on the right foot. Certainly no one was able to do it for my brother with love, guidance, support, and everything else. It, you know, it sometimes takes a real team, and even then you can't. So I don't think it's about giving up hope. I think it's just about looking at the reality of the picture and the risk for security. And so, blah. That might have been as long as someone else in here, and I'm sorry, but I just.
Did anybody else in this side of the room wish to address this? We'll take a couple more comments. Yes, sir.
Very curious. Let's assume the project doesn't go forward, but the motel is going to be completed in April. Would, would that motel receive people from your department, just as every other motel receives people from your department?
I sure hope so, because I don't need the rules.
Without the structure that you proposed with this agreement.
Although, you know, I'm very mindful tonight of, of these issues being raised, so I really want to work through that and not have it come to that.
Yeah, and I'll say, we want to make sure that if we're placing folks there, they have access to the types of services that we're describing. So this is the best, most efficient way to make that happen.
So you would not accept referrals from, from him if you didn't have this agreement?
Oh, I mean, we would explore other avenues for securing supportive services funding. But, yeah, this is a motel that is currently under construction that's going to be completed in April, and we'll be able to rent it out to guests like any other motel.
I'm going to give this lady an opportunity here. She raised her hand. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Michelle Mayer. We've had in contact. And I am currently homeless. I am homeless due to garnishments from my income from the Department of Social Services that were mandated to me during custody battle in Palchek's courtroom. The, they, what is going to be done to prevent you from doing that to more people? Because these services cost money, and I was charged with $72,000, $35,000 of which was interest, and I am now homeless, driven into poverty. So, one, why haven't you returned any of my emails knowing that I'm homeless when it's below zero due to actions taken by DSS? And two, what are you going to do to prevent during these two other members of our community?
I can do two things.
And you were my lawyer that imposed the garnishment, that was supposed to be protecting me against the proceedings, just so there might be.
Proceedings.
In Palchek's courtroom, you were my attorney when all this happened to my income.
Correct. Your children, if you don't mind me saying, can we talk about it?
Well, my children, you gave, I called the police because my ex-husband, my then-husband beat me. You gave my children.
Not the time or the place.
Okay, so what are you going, well, you said you wanted to talk about it. My ex-husband turned them into the county. I was then forced to pay for that, and he wasn't charged a penny, and I'm homeless. So what is going to be done to prevent that from happening to somebody else?
Okay, that's the question, and the commissioner's going to respond to that, not about your particular legal case.
Well, he said he wanted.
Well, he's going to respond to your question about the homeless, and that's, and.
And what is going, what can be done to repair the damage done to me? So I'm no longer homeless.
Well, it sounds like you're eligible, so if you come in and apply for homeless, you will be put up.
Why don't you just return the money you garnished from my income, so I can pay for it myself?
Where, that would be, I'm sure you would love that to happen, but we're not going to discuss your personal legal case here. This, we shouldn't really be doing this.
It isn't a personal legal case.
You're not helping yourself either.
It was a long time ago, and I am homeless in zero degree weather that he was aware of, and didn't answer one single email.
Well, you can, he just told you now, if you go to the office tomorrow, you can make an application to be, to get shelter.
I, I did. I asked him for that online, and he didn't respond to a single email.
He, he just told you that you can go in tomorrow and do that.
So if you're going to mandate all these people to services, how many more people are going to end up in the position that I'm in?
Well, I'm not sure what position that is.
I was forced to pay for the services that I was mandated to.
I'm going to say, I'm going to say for the first time in, in a number of years, I think that we really got to end this discussion, because we're not, we can't discuss your personal case here, okay? And we really shouldn't be doing it. He shouldn't be doing it as the commissioner, and, and, and you're not helping yourself.
You're discussing mandated people to services, and people are talking about how they're going to pay for. As soon as somebody starts earning a living, the income is garnished to pay for those services. So it's absolutely relevant to what's being discussed in this room.
Well, I don't believe this.
Well, if I can just.
Okay, I'm going to ask you not to respond to that, and I'm going to take this lady's question back there. Okay?
And if I can just clarify though, there, there's no charge for the services.
But you garnish the incomes afterwards as reimbursement. That's not true. I can show the paperwork. You garnish the incomes as reimbursement.
Go there tomorrow and apply for services. Yes, ma'am.
I just have a question, sorry, with regards to specifics. If there's all these other different operating hotels and motels at this current point, I'm confused about the lack of clarity on how much can be provided or what's being allocated within that 30% or whatever it might be. And what, if there isn't security being provided at other locations, what would make, and you stated there isn't going to be security, correct?
Security as in security forces at this hotel, no?
Right, okay. So no security.
At any of there.
At any of the hotels. Okay. And, and why, I'm curious, if, if we have this many incidents being called in on a weekly basis, why isn't any of that, because it's such an expense that it can't be covered? I'm confused why there isn't security when there's a clear need. If, if volunteer firefighters are going every week to these places, why isn't there security?
The subcontract, you know, will be identifying the provider that makes the best offer, but it will include supervision, security, supportive services. It won't be, you know, we're not going to have a, a roving team of three people walking around the grounds 24 hours a day.
So what is the definition of security then? Just out of?
That means having a presence on site, someone who's there to supervise.
But they're not roving, and they're not there, but they're supervising.
Right. And I don't think it's security forces like, like police. I think that's what you're talking about. Now, that doesn't.
Supervision.
Yeah. Again, I, I talked about maybe getting the other, they're talking.
It's just kind of, I think it would really help this question that keeps coming up. I'm sure that with all of this, you've done massive amounts of numbers. So I guess my question is, what number is that 30%? And what services could be provided for that much money, being sort of the layperson in the whole conversation?
So that, you know, depending on the number that you add up, if you do the capacity, it's 30% of that in a year.
So say we were at 270,000.
Yeah, roughly $200,000. And that would forward.
What can be done for 200,000, what can be provided to people for $200,000 on a daily 24/7?
Supervision and case management services. And I think it should be pretty much 24/7 supervision.
And supervision is someone at the front desk, or supervision?
Someone at the front. So if people are coming in, they have to check in at the front desk. They're going by the units. If there's noise at one of them, they're stopping in and saying, hey, you know, this isn't the place. They're calling DSS over if there's an issue and someone needs to get sanctioned, or someone needs services. They're helping to connect the dots and bring in other service providers and other resources to address people's needs. So you can't necessarily prescribe ahead of time what that's going to look like, because as was mentioned by Tina Sharp and Michael Cole, the unique needs of each of these individuals and these families is different. Some of them, it might be, you know, their child is having trouble with homework. They, they, there's going to be families there with children. It might be they're struggling, having had to move out of their home, and now they're placed at this motel, which is nicer, but they're away from their friends, and maybe they're upset. The case manager might be able to help connect them to a youth program in the city of Hudson. So it's really, it's driven by the needs of the population in the motel. And to the extent possible, we want it to be focused on, let's support people in limiting their stay here and feeling like they have dignity and value, and that they can get back on their feet again. So that's, that's, well, those are the kinds of questions we're going to be asking the folks that we try to subcontract with.
May I just follow up that and ask how much experience you have with running homeless shelters?
So I am on the, the board of one of New York City's largest permanent supportive housing nonprofit organizations. So pretty significant experience with operating a wide range of supportive services.
What is the name of that organization?
Lantern. Lantern organization.
I'm going to take one more comment, because I've got another meeting to go to. I know everybody else has other commitments here tonight. Sir, you in the back? You're done. Okay. What we're going to do is, this thing evolves, we're going to schedule similar forums for this at 5 o'clock after our regular health and medical services meeting. If you take a look at the county website, we'll show when the next one will be. Okay? Thank you all. Is there motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, are all in favor?